...in order and open with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Full council chamber tonight, or at least two more than usually are here. My activity report is going to be fairly brief. I've only had one meeting that I can recall, and that was our airport meeting, and we talked about flying, pretty much, all which is coming up on August 11th, that's a Sunday, so mark your calendars for that. We hope to be adding some new events, especially for kids. And I think that was pretty much the highlights of that meeting, so then I'll pass it down to Councilmember LeBeau.
I had an area center board meeting, a code committee meeting, a downtown development meeting, and a budget and finance meeting.
All right, good for you. Councilmember Renkey?
Thank you. We had a couple of policies and procedures meetings, interviewed some people for the police bookkeeper position, and second round of police officer interviews tonight, along with a meeting at the school regarding an SRO position.
All right, and Councilmember Gilmore?
A downtown meeting on policy and procedures.
All right, and Councilmember Hertzberg is excused tonight. All right, then we have just one department head report. That's Chief Wagner.
Thank you. So I asked me to put back on this agenda, like I told you at the meeting a few weeks ago. I have the year-end report done, so I wanted to present that to you guys here tonight and just kind of briefly go through some of that. So as it has been in years past, I have the opening letter and then a rundown of the staff, kind of what our mission statement, core values, and motto are for the police department. And we kind of run through just generally some of the activity highlights from 2018. Obviously, the biggest situation we had in 2018 was the double homicide. Besides that case, though, we did have quite a few other significant cases, one of which, after our investigation, we turned over to the federal authorities. So we're hoping that that will lead to some significant charges in that case. We also had an officer last year that was honored for a life savings award back in 2017 incident. We started the K-9 fundraiser, and we had the resignation, or not resignation, but retirement of Officer Alfreding. And I'll let you guys kind of go through the rest of that on your own. As far as the statistics and stuff like that go for last year, our major significant crimes, crimes against a person, crimes against like property-type crimes, either stayed the same or went down last year. Our property crimes actually went down significantly by 19 calls over the year before. Traffic enforcement you're going to see is significantly up. Just so you understand, the biggest part of that traffic enforcement is going to have come from our involvement with the TZD grant. This last year, we put in 3.5 hours less than the city of St. Cloud. So that kind of gives you an idea of the number of hours that officers are working on their own time towards that traffic enforcement. So that's why those numbers are up a little bit. As I went through there, I didn't see a ton of, you know, drastic changes on stuff. Probably the most important things to me that stand out, that I always look at when I assess kind of how we're doing our, you know, what are our arrests, what are our felony convictions, or felony charges that we've sent through the court system. This last year, we were up six felony violations. Our misdemeanors were up, but our custodial arrests, where we actually took somebody to jail, were up 24, which tells me that the guys are out there and they're, you know, we are making a difference and working hard to keep, you know, people off the streets who are victimizing our citizens. So, and especially on the felony stuff, you know, the more we clear on the felony cases, to me, the greater impact that we can have. With that, I guess if anybody has any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
This doesn't have anything to do with last year, but for this year now, are you going to do another, find another night-to-unite in some type of a shop with a cop or some kind of fundraiser for, along those lines?
We are. We will have the golf tournament this year set for June 29th. Amongst the many other things we'll be doing, I'll be working on getting that put together here in the near future so that we're ready. We will raise money at that event for our shop with a cop as well as our night-to-unite event. We may tweak it a little bit as far as the shop with a cop stuff this year, depending upon what happens with ShopCo. Maybe, you know, we can hopefully get something back in that building that's a retail. That'd be great, and we'll go back there. If not, I'll have to reassess how we're going to do it. We modified it this last year. We did not take any kids shopping, simply because they were closing down, and the selection even when we went shopping there was significantly less. So we'll still be doing that, and ultimately, our goal is to continue to add new things on our outreach. It's just a matter of luck and win.
And then the, for the Ton of Country Days, it's going to be the Pork Chop K-9 Tom and Jerry fundraiser again?
Correct. We will be doing the Pork Chop Stand again for the K-9. We'll be continuing to sell what t-shirts we have left, so if anybody wants them, we still have them. And just on the Jerry side of things, he did start his training today, and he did start his training with the cone of shame.
I heard he had a little...
He did. He's got a little owie on his foot, apparently, that he won't leave alone, so.
Any other questions for the chief? I guess not, then. Thank you very much. With that, excuse me, we have the consent agenda to address, and that would be the approving the agenda then, and the minutes from those seven meetings there, and the vouchers off our update that we just got. Some technical difficulties there. Those total $156,990.15. And they're listed on page one there.
We'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Renkey to approve the consent agenda discussion. All in favor, aye. Oppose? None? And that carried? Do it that hard. All right, then, the first item on our action list under new business, resignation requests for hiring part-time seasonal and 67-day public works employees, Ron. We have resignations from Grant Fokes and Jordan Coulter, and any want to start the hiring process? Let's get an eligibility list.
One of each of the 67-day seasonal, obviously, is just in the summer months, and the part-time personnel will run from March till probably June.
We'll move to accept the resignation of Grant Fokes and Jordan Coulter, both from the Public Works Department, effective March 11th, 2019.
We have a motion by Renkey, seconded by Gilmore, to accept the resignations of Grant Fokes and Jordan Coulter from Public Works Department, effective March 11th. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? And that carried?
I'll make a motion, authorize starting the process to create an eligibility list. The one seasonal 67-day part-time position during the summer and the one part-time public works employee to work March through December, 1,040 hours per year.
I'll second.
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by LeBeau, as on the action sheet there, page three, discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? And that carried? And start the process. So that's good, because I wrote about that in my article this week, so. Don't make me a liar. Okay, chief, we have four vehicles here we want to approve for going on the auction block?
Correct. So we've got four forfeited vehicles. I believe all four of these are from DWI enforcement. All of them, all the cases have run their course in the court system. The individual's time has run out to contest the forfeitures, and I believe we're waiting on titles on two yet, but the other two are titled to the city of Painesville. Would like to get those disposed of so we can free up space in our garage. The estimates that I have down there are my best guess on the 1971 Chevy pickup. It is a classic, so. I'm guessing. The others are pretty accurate as far as what the Kelley Blue Book has on those. As always, the proceeds of these vehicles, once we remove our expenses, which will include the storage and towing, 70% will go to the city and to the police department's forfeiture fund, and then 30% will go back to the prosecuting attorney if there are any proceeds. Some of these may not even bring enough to cover our expenses. But that's kind of the unfortunate nature of the beast. I'd like to list them on eBay like we have in the past. I believe that's our cheapest way to go to get them out there, so.
I'll make the motion to approve the sale of the 1971 Chevrolet C-10, 2009 Pontiac G6, 2005 Toyota Corolla, and 2003 Pontiac Grand Prix via eBay auction with the funds being split according to the state statute and placed into the department's forfeiture fund for future needs.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Renkey to approve the sale of those vehicles via eBay and the split according to statute. Any discussion on that? You can read that on page four. I'm not going to read through it again. If not, proceed to vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? And that carried? And the next thing we have is a variance request coming from the Zimmer Cast over by, behind the fire hall. And they want to replace a garage with a larger garage. They will not meet some setbacks that they already don't meet. So planning board has approved this. They recommend to go ahead with a hearing, and we'd like to have that April 8th at 6:15 here in council chambers.
I'll move to set the Zimmer Cast variance public hearing for Monday, April 8th, 2019, at 6:15 p.m.
I'll second.
Motion by Renkey, seconded by LeBeau to set that public hearing. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? And that carried? Purchase of office furniture for emergency management director and police secretary and bookkeeper. I suppose we're getting a new person. We need new furniture, right?
Well, hopefully, we're getting a new person in a couple actions here.
It's for Jerry.
For Jerry, yeah. Well, it looked like he was taking over the chief's desk there.
He was. We're working on that. So just before you is, we reached out to Northern Business Products and then also Office Furniture Solutions to see if we could come up with a more, I guess, workspace-friendly environment for that, the space between the emergency management and the police secretary there. So this did go to budget and finance, and I would recommend or ask for approval for the Northern Business product. The one thing that is not included in here are chairs, and I did that because chairs, like a lot of different things, fit people differently, so I wanted to wait until we knew who we were hiring before we sought out to buy a chair, so.
And this furniture is more of the cubicle style like we have in the administrative office area.
Is that true, you mean by out of date? Or is there a used by?
No, but the press board does that the emergency management directors had for, I think, the last 30 years. Kind of fell apart. We got our 100 bucks worth.
Yeah, okay.
And with the bookkeeper position being a dual position, it's going to require two separate computers, and the currently secretary space would not accommodate a workspace and that as it currently sits.
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of office furniture for the emergency management director and police secretary bookkeeper, with the purchase being split between emergency management, police, and city with the Northern Business products as recommended by budget and finance.
I'll second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Renkey to approve the purchase of office furniture as indicated there on page 22. Discussion.
Looking at the Northern Business products.
And Northern Business products, yeah, they're quoted. That's right. That's not in the wording. Thank you. Anything else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? And that carried? And now we need someone to occupy the furniture, right?
That would be good.
Whoa, we've had interviews.
Yes, Your Honor? We received 12 applications for the position of police secretary bookkeeper. Paul and I individually scored, and we interviewed six candidates. From the six candidates, we are recommending Stephanie Soraki for the position. We are asking council to accept the recommendation of grade five, step three, due to the additional training and licensure in law enforcement that Stephanie has, which would be a great asset to the police department, and place Caitlin Lither on the eligibility list.
I'll move to approve the hiring of Stephanie Soraki as the police secretary and bookkeeper position with start date of April 3rd, 2019, at grade five, step three, $17 per hour, and place Caitlin Lither on the eligibility list.
I will second.
Motion by Renkey, seconded by LeBeau to approve the hiring of Stephanie Soraki as the police secretary bookkeeper position with the start date of April 3rd. You can start faster, sooner. April 3rd, 2019?
We have a typo in the action.
Oh, that's my phone.
Not 18, okay. Really a lot of backspace. I have grade five, step three, $17 per hour, and place Caitlin Lither on the eligibility list for an open position. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? I heard. All right.
And Stephanie came here this evening?
Yeah, you got 10 minutes. No, I'm kidding. Unless you want 10 minutes.
No, I'm good. Stephanie, Jennifer has an offer letter for you that you can take and welcome aboard.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Can I stay for the rest?
If you can, because I want to talk to you. Okay.
Now you won't want to take it. I'm just kidding.
It's not all the time we have people in the audience, so this is good.
You get so excited.
Now we have to be on our behavior, though. Okay, item F, resignation and starting the process to hire liquor store clerk, because Dawn Coltes has submitted her resignation effective March 15th, so we need a motion to accept that and then a motion to start the process to create an eligibility list for the position of liquor store clerk.
I'll make the motion to accept the resignation from Dawn Coltes, liquor store clerk, effective March 15th, 2019.
I'll second that.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Gilmore to accept the resignation from Dawn, effective March 15th. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? And that carried?
I'll make a motion to start the process to create an eligibility list, the position of liquor store clerk.
Second.
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Renkey to create an eligibility list for the position of liquor store clerk. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? And that's one carried? And for the other person in the audience, chief?
So we received 18 applications for the police officer's position. After scoring the applications, I decided to interview 11 of those. Based on the interviews of those 11, we felt that there was one really strong candidate for the position, and we brought that individual back this evening to meet with policies and procedures and asked him to stay for the council meeting so he could meet with everybody else. And based on the interviews, both tonight and last Thursday, we would ask for permission to hire, or, excuse me, for permission to move forward with the hiring process with Cody Hokinson to conduct the background psychological and physical testing. And then we'll bring back a recommendation of the council once that's all complete, as far as final approval.
Chief?
Yep.
I did put it on the action sheet to hire contingent on him passing.
So you wouldn't have to come back if?
Okay. Is that okay? Renee wrote.
Okay. You're easy.
Works for me.
As long as that C is in there, contingent, right?
Yep.
I'll make the motion to hire Cody Hokinson as a full-time police officer at $20.19 per hour, grade nine, step one, $42,073 annually, contingent on his passing the physical exam, physical test, psychological evaluations, and background investigation.
I'll second that.
Motion by Renkey, seconded by Gilmore to hire, what's the first name again?
Cody.
Cody.
So we'll have a Carter, Carter, Colin, and Cody.
Yeah.
It's a C kind of game.
And Belinda, and Belinda.
Belinda, okay. It's a good thing we have a name tag. All right, retire Cody Hokinson as a full-time police officer at $20.19 per hour, grade nine, step one, $42,073 annually, contingent on passing the physical exam, physical test, psychological evaluations, and background investigation. Anything, any questions, comments, or others? Not? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? And that carried?
And then out of those same interviews, the group, which consisted of Renee, Officer Fred, and myself, felt that there were two other candidates that would be worthy of consideration, or future consideration. We'd asked that they would be put on the eligibility list, and those would have been Dana Cluver and Garrett Okerstrom.
I'll make the motion to create an eligibility list and place Dana Cluver and Garrett Okerstrom on that list.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Renkey to create an eligibility list and place Dana Cluver and Garrett Okerstrom on the list. Discussion. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? None? And that carried? And then from our update, this is something that Eden Lake Township, they have a meeting coming up, so we'd like to get this taken care of. Is that correct, Ron?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, members of the Eden Lake Township, they contacted us, asking for authorization for their residents to utilize the complex site that if you are not familiar with it, we are seven days a week, you have to pay $10.00 and it is monitored only by a security camera. We also, it's very likely that some of the residents could have been utilizing it already. Along with that, Eden Lake would give us a $150 donation for operation. And I guess that would be a more reasonable why not to go along with it.
I move to approve the agreement between the city of Painesville and Eden Lake Township.
Second.
Motion by Renkey, seconded by LeBeau to approve the agreement between the city of Painesville and the Eden Lake Township. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? And that carried? All right, that's it for new business, old business. And coming back to the fire truck bids, we'd wanted 2,000, and bids went up as far as 1,500. It was going to come back to us to determine if we were going to accept that, or we were also going to find out if there was going to be a little more on that.
That's what it was. That's what it was.
That's what it was, okay. That's it. Can't squeeze blood out of a tourniquet?
That's what it was.
That's what it was, okay.
And that person will still buy it for the 1,500?
Yeah, I've actually been in communications with him. He is a chief of police in a small community or township, something like that, out in Wisconsin.
Police officers always want to grow up and be firefighters.
I figured that's the only way anyone would like us. But apparently, he's got a large shed and already has three fire trucks in it, so.
Oh, okay. So he's a collector.
He is.
Do you know when he'd want to come get it?
That I don't. I guess I've just kind of been the middleman on this one, so if council approves it, I will turn it over to the fire department to communicate back with him as to getting his new truck.
Is it cleared out up there where it's being stored?
Yeah. They got to get down to the, um...
Yeah, it's on the waste line, so.
Will it make it to Wisconsin?
On a trailer.
I know it doesn't go very fast, but...
No, you don't drive all the way to Wisconsin. I'd like to make a motion that we accept a bid for $1,500 with $500 that are going to be used for a display for the truck.
I will second that.
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by LeBeau to accept the $1,500 bid on the 1968 fire truck and that $500 of that be used for a display regarding the truck. Is that what you?
That's correct, sir.
That's what, sure. I got one thing right tonight, then. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Sold. All right. And the railroad train whistle. Another item coming back.
Well, the Corvins are extremely happy, and they wanted me to express to council that they appreciate your assistance in getting the train whistles to stop. It was a new process with the Canadian Pacific where they have to blow their horn at any type of area that connects to the train, so be it a driveway, and this was the cartway that is out there that was causing this. The cartway, if there's a car by the tracks, if there's a dog by the tracks, if there's anything by the tracks, they have to blow their horn. So for two weeks, it was completely quiet out there. They had to go through the whole state and shut off all these places that we're blowing at. And then they blew their whistle last Thursday. So I called the Corvins, and they said, "You did a great job, but the whistle blew again." And so I called my contact at Canadian Pacific, and before she could get back to me, they called and said, "It's not going anymore." So she said, "It must have been a deer or something that was by the tracks," because it is like a sonar around outside the train, and it automatically goes off. The engineer doesn't have any control over it. So if on the GPS it's got an area marked that connects to the train in the tracks, it'll automatically blow. So he figures that there, she figured that there must have been an animal or something that the radar hit. So, but other than that, train whistles are all gone outside of the city.
Then they know that if there's a deer out there, it might blow again tomorrow afternoon?
And they said, "They'll be happy to chart that for me."
Okay, that's, okay. Well, thank you for all your phone calls and...
Well, thanks to Bill for getting me the right area to direct to it. And she also took the application for the holiday train, so hopefully, maybe we'll get a good reason.
Oh, okay. All right. Oh, no action needed on that, other than we have been informed as to what has been going on. Hopefully, it'll be taken care of now, if it was darn dear. Okay, then the only other thing is informational. Friday, March 22nd, Highway 23 Coalition in a meeting at the 400 Club in Rockville. We have the police department report for the month of February, a liquor store report, and a notice of a special city council meeting with the school and township on April 16th from 5:00 to 6:00 with a special city council working session to follow. And Renee, thank you for putting that together.
Oh, sure.
And that is, yep?
I think, just for residents, we do have warm weather, however, red acid residents with the water running, their taps... However, I asked residents whether water running, their taps please let her come for at least another two weeks. We will be sending up the cars, but frost is still going down, and we are still seeing people freeze up.
I think we had one council members of building freeze, have water freeze up, so, yes, good, good, thank you for that. So with that, we are done.
Congratulations, both of you.